I would call this meeting to order. We have a forum. Please stand for the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, you know, that is states of America and to a republic with its stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will undertake a motion to approve electronic guess, which will include Aaron Kelly at some place.
He said the day of the work meeting, right? Except got done right at seven, so we will be here today.
Yeah, that is available.
I'm going.
Second.
And then his response is.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Good Jackie.
Hi.
No, Mr. Reed. Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion passed by. Don't want to. Do we watch each other's face tonight or what?
Just their question. Their hair, Ken's hair today.
Yeah, I have a question.
Uh.
Uh, it's okay because they can attend anyway, but like, why would we ask the people attending electronically if they want to participate, if it's okay, if we allow them to participate? How can they get involved in?
Oh, that's right.
It doesn't matter.
You never.
Any call Rosetti or pass.
You've never called us in the role before.
Yeah.
No, this is the first time.
Yeah, sorry.
Twenty twenty-one.
You wanted to change it up a little bit, that's all. I was just seeing if you were checking.
Keep you on your toes.
All good. Put me down for a nay then.
Anyone sign up to speak tonight?
Laura.
Hi.
Pardon, um, you had that?
Sorry. No, it's not.
Anyone else?
No.
All right, then you should have the meeting minutes from December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. Please review those, any changes, additions, corrections. If there are no changes, I undertake a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Good Jackie.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Motion passed by zero. Excellent.
Mr. Hedges has a few additions for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I waive an ordinance granting a variation of the resurfacing requirements for a parking area on the property at Tuscan Woods Park. You have in your packets tonight, a letter from Executive Director Shaw who will do this tonight. You also have a recommendation, our layout and a site plan showing where this parking area is. And then you have recommendation from the zoning board and the planning commission. And I believe that that should be adequate. Thank you.
That's Eric's dog.
That's mine.
There you go.
Turn aside, I don't even see a park.
He doesn't, he doesn't like parking lots.
Well, babe.
Did you just, did you, did you just call it a barking line?
He doesn't, he doesn't like anything. Let's, we'll be honest. He don't like anything.
He wants natural grass. He has all natural grass.
Oh, grass.
Any questions or comments on the proposal for the park district?
Questions? I did read here in somewhere that there's a deadline to when they're gonna make it asphalt.
There's a five-year window.
Five-year, okay.
That was the recommendation of the zoning board.
Great.
And this can be up for like, God, because we don't know what's gonna happen with the wall, right? Like if, uh, there's no money or a global pandemic or some kind of thing that happens again in five years and they can't make it, there's not a fine, right? They just have to come back to the village and ask for an extension. That might not work.
They could do that, yeah.
Oh, I just realized you're here. You're here, here.
He didn't, he just recognized you without your microphone.
I've got him with me. You're still a little late on the question, like.
Answer, play your own, man, go. Any, any questions or comments? All right, then I will undertake a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one dash oh one, an ordinance granting a variation of the surfacing requirements for a parking area on the property at Tuscan Woods Park in the village.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Good Jackie.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Take a moment, because it's gonna cost.
Let's hear the allegations.
Lasts as long as I can.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we now have a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Hampshire Township for indemnification in regard to collection of trans, transition fees collected for the benefit of the township. And this is really just a cleanup, uh, new government, or excuse me, indemnification agreement. Um, this, the, the fee, transition fee structure was approved several years ago, but this, this agreement was missing. And the township did pass it in their December meeting, so it's just waiting for your approval and then your signature.
Any questions or comments?
They just transition fees now?
No, they're, they're, they're supposed to give them for any like new development.
Going forward.
Correct. Anything we have now is already in a development agreement. Like, I mean, all the grounds. So.
So it's just stuff that's not annexed, right?
Cur, anything that's currently.
Really to develop.
That's not included. That's already done.
That's already, that's already announced.
How about like the Schroeder Farm?
Right. That'd be, well, no, there's an agreement for that.
That's already an agreement, right?
Right.
They wouldn't get any of that either.
Uh, I'd have to read the agreement.
No, but we could as a board ask for this to be included, right? If they want negotiations or something like, if they came to us, like, uh, they want to have a developer to come to us asking for modifications to a current development agreement or something like that, we could say, okay, fine.
Those, those, one of the clauses we use, uh, provides that transition fees would be paid whatever they are at the time of development. That's why I said I'd have to look at the agreement. We, we tried to retain some flexibility in some of these agreements on the transition fees. Some of them say that, uh, after six months of, after approval, they would kick in, which the approval of the township transition fee is more than six months ago now.
Right.
So, uh, so that might be another way it would kick in for someone like the Schroeder Farm. And, and, uh, Sir Reed is correct, if they come back for something, uh, it's, it might be possible to renegotiate on that point as well. So, uh, each of these agreements, yes, you just have to look at each one when they come up.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then I undertake a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash oh one, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Hampshire Township for indemnification in regards to collection of transition fees collected for the benefit of the township. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Good Jackie.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Klein.
No.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Motion passed four one.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have an ordinance proposing establishment of a special service area number twenty-seven for Hampshire Corporate Center Detention Basin. I think you're probably all familiar with the project that's going on now, uh, to expand their storage, right? It's been going on quite some time, but it has gotten to the point now where we're getting ready to finish it up. And now Mr. Schuster's, uh, been working with their attorney on this, SSA.
It's really nice. It's next to, you know, um, Black Diamond Storage, on the other side of the business complex.
Uh, we would need to consider a date, uh, for a public hearing, uh, on this proposal for the statutory process. February eighteenth, the blank in there, I think. All right, paragraph one.
Page two. It's February eighteenth. There's posting requirements there, so not less than fifteen, not more than thirty.
Right.
Mr. Richards, you know that though? Right? So February eighteenth, the postings will have to be done.
Not less than fifteen. Posting is just a matter of publication.
Or just publication.
Correct. And, uh, and, and mailing, I believe, mailing a notice to the, uh, to the owners in accordance with the tax records. But we've, we've been in discussion with, uh, Mr. Richards and whoever's, I forget who's the exact owner of this, these parcels. And, you know, it's a corporation or LLC or something, but we'll give you appropriate notices and I'll ask them to consider waiving any, all their objections in any event. So it's all one owner at this point.
Okay.
And it's for backup only, so.
Two.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on the ordinance?
This is Aaron. I have a question. Did we approve improvements that, did we approve improvements that would cause the requirement of a new stormwater management facility and thus a new SSA?
Yes. Improvements, they're expanding their storage facility on this property and it requires additional retention, detention. And, uh, I believe they're substantially done with the improvements. So this was, this is a requirement under the statute, under the county code and your village code, that a backup SSA be provided, uh, for maintenance of that stormwater area.
Is there any requirement for a vil, the village board to have oversight or approval to improvements of land that would then result in a new taxing district as a result of those improvements? Because I don't remember us ever having a discussion about this type of improvement or one that would result in a new SSA and a new stormwater management facility.
This, I'm not sure how to answer that. Um, the, I mean, all, all of the new improvements in, uh, generally require that stormwater management be addressed. And in any case where stormwater management facilities are required, it is required that a backup SSA be created.
Required by who, village ordinance?
County ordinance.
County.
King County.
But. As a, as a piece of that, the village was required to adopt and has to comply with the county stormwater regulations. So it's been adopted into and added to the village code as well. So both, it's a requirement under both codes. Mr. Kelly, to your, to your question, uh, I don't know if there are any village required, uh, excuse me, any, any variances or any village board requirement approvals required. I can tell you that when I arrived here a year ago, that I participated in the first design review meetings, uh, with the developer and with, uh, engineering, with the EBI. Uh, so this has gone through the permitting process and the, and the engineering approval process, but any approval by the village board, there may not have been any required. Uh, but that, if there was, it was part of my time being here. We can research that for you.
I can tell you that it, this development precedes my time here because when I, when I first came here, I, I think this is at least the third start of this exact project. So it's, it's may even predate you, Mike, as far as the original board approval.
One, uh, so that's not really my question. My question is, this is an improvement to an existing development. It's not what the original development agreement was. And when it goes to whether it's the, the engineering reviews or, uh, into a zoning board, uh, whatever it may be, this isn't a zoning thing, I understand that. But if it goes to engineering reviews and in that engineering review, it comes out that there will need to be a new stormwater system and thus a new SSA. Because we're creating a new tax or a new, we have to pass a new ordinance as a result of that, shouldn't the village board be notified and informed as to whether or not that improvement should be, should go forward? Since it's not, it's not just like a, an owner improving a piece of land and, and the village not being affected by it. This has a direct effect on the village and any future property owners of that said property.
Well, what is, what, at what point would the village board, and for what purpose would the village board be so notified?
I understand where he's coming from.
I, I, I'm not quite getting it. That's why I'm asking.
So this, this improvement has required by King County ordinance that we pass a new SSA to create a backup that is a direct result of the improvement being made to that property.
Yes.
For no other reason than the owner of a property has made an improvement, which now creates a new mandated tax. My statement is, we're the ones, an SSA is a tax. It goes on your property tax bill.
It's only in close if he fails to do the work as the owner.
I'm, I'm not talking about when we use the SSA. I'm saying we have to create this. We have to pass an ordinance. That's what this, that's what's in our packet, right? We have to pass, what is this, ordinance twenty-one dash whatever it ends up being, to establish a new special service area number twenty-seven, which is a tax-defined area for the backup of the stormwater system. My question is, when an improvement results in the village having to pass an ordinance that creates a new financial tax on a piece of property, shouldn't we be notified or a part of that process?
That's what this is. That's one answer. You're saying, you're saying somehow.
We have no option in this. We have no option in this. This is, we have to do this. This is King County ordinance. They've already done the improvement. It's required this update. We have to pass this by law. Am I, am I mistaken in that?
You are not.
So why wouldn't we get involved before we get to this point?
The owner has a right to, to make the improvements within the zoning code and so on. So are, are you suggesting you would decline to allow him to make the improvement in order to avoid creating the new tax district?
I think it's something that we should at least be involved in the discussion before that improvement happens when it goes to an engineering review. Because when this owner is, and I'm not saying it's because of this owner, but any owner that does an improvement that results in this, when they go to sell the property, that property now comes with an SSA. Now, I'm not a realtor and I don't deal in commercial real estate, but I would guess that this SSA is gonna deal directly with that property, which now will make it a little more difficult to sell because there's an additional property tax fee to it.
It will not.
So no, no commercial person will look at it and say, the property next door has no SSA. I'm gonna go buy that one instead of this one.
No, because if the property next door is not developed and they go to develop it, that will have to have a backup SSA too. And this probably did come before the board when it was in the inception stages and in the engineering stages, but that was literally like ten to fifteen years ago. So this probably did come before the board. We just, none of us were here.
Christine, Jay just said he, it came to review, engineering review when he's been on as administrator. So this is in the past year.
Yes, but the original development plans and the original concept plan came a long time ago.
Okay.
But they're not related.
But regardless, regardless of where it came from and how long ago it was, based on King County statute, this is what has to be done. Whether we agree with an SSA or don't, if this property resides in King County, this is what has to happen.
But he's saying that we should be involved with it before it gets to King County.
And technically, and I understand, I, I understand it, but then at that point, that would have been at the time that the property was annexed into the village and the development agreement was made.
And which was ten.
Which was ten to fifteen years ago, which predates almost everybody this year, predates everybody in this room. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Kelly, and I know your discontent for SSAs in general. I get it. But unfortunately, I think we're backed into a corner with this because it's not something, it's not us. This is King County. So I guess what we can do is if we want, we can lobby King County to change the legislation, but it's not gonna change what we have to do right here. This is.
That's not the purpose of why I'm saying that. I do dislike SSAs. My purpose is, we, we have a process and we as a board now are passing a new tax. I don't care if it's an SSA or a places to eating tax or whatever it is. Something has happened outside of our initiative and we are now going to create a new tax on a property as a result of that because we're mandated to do so. It just, it seems like that process is broken. There's nothing we can do with it now. What I ask is that we review this, the process, and have a discussion at another time about what that entire process looks like. And if it's because we screwed up as a village, and, and I'm not saying we on the current board, but we as a village didn't anticipate this at the original development agreement and just put it in place at that time, then, then fine, that's on us. But we're now passing something because we have to, right?
Well, remember that the owner applied for this. That's how this starts. The owner has to file an application for creation of this SSA. This proposes it tonight. The owner will get notice. He can come to you and object to creating it, to the rate of tax, to anything else, and that will occur on February eighteen. And then it will be finally established, if, if you go ahead. But the law requires that it be put in place.
And, and the property owner at the current time is the one that applied for this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if the owner does the maintenance that's required, there'll never be a tax.
And then the development agreement, I'm sure it specified that this had to be done under, with this certain.
No, it's no different. If there ever was a development agreement, it's expired.
Okay.
The first part of this development was developed in King County and then was brought into the village. It was all finished.
Oh, all right.
And it predated the King County stormwater ordinance. So the stormwater facilities that served the first part of the corporate center development are not subject to an SSA requirement because it predated it. So it, it goes back to the nineteen nineties when that was built. Mr. Kelly, if I have you hearing correctly, are you saying you would like to know and you think the board should know whenever we have a project, it will include a pond or a detention pond that would require an SSA? You, you'd like the board to know it at the beginning of that project?
Every development.
No, I think it needs to be discussed at the initial part of the development agreement. We have more developments that are gonna be coming. I think this is a, a broader discussion down the road that, that won't apply to this one SSA, but it's, there is a broken process we need to think through. Um, and to Attorney Schuster, to your comment that there wouldn't be a tax so long as he maintains it, that's actually not accurate because this is a backup. If we don't create the tax for it, there is no money in the account to back up and go then go fix. And we now have an issue with a lot of other SSAs where we are raising people's SSA because we didn't have enough funds in there and they didn't maintain things that we're now going in to maintain.
Well, so, right.
That, that's.
You're not incorrect about that. This, that, the, the, the process really does not call for collecting funds in advance. That's a problem with the process, but the village didn't create that process, the state did.
So basically, as far as I understand, an SSA, you're paying it in the years because you complete the work and then you budget for it the following year. Based on the work that was completed the previous year, kinda like, I know property taxes are a bad example, but you pay those in the years as well.
Even all the SSAs that we approved last meeting didn't exist.
Well, no, they, they existed.
Well, and that was ever collected.
Well.
Yeah, the SSAs we just approved were for future work, to fund future work, not to fund previous work.
Right. That's not necessarily, that was ba, was ba.
Absolutely what we just went through. It was a three to five-year plan that Mr. Hedges really put well together. And we were looking at what the raise was because of work that needed to be done over that time period.
Those, those were different kind of SSAs, Mr. Kelly, those were not backup SSAs. Excuse me, those are.
No, I to, I totally get it. I'm just saying, if, I think we can move on from this. I've made my point.
I'll touch base with you and understand your point a little better so we can follow. Okay?
All right, any further questions or comments? I will undertake a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one dash oh two, an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number twenty-seven in the village of Hampshire at the Hampshire Corporate Center. Uh, page two, adding, uh, February eighteenth as the date for the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Rob.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Good Jackie.
Yep.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Motion passed six zero.
Here we have a motion to hold a public hearing on the proposed annexation agreement with Briar Hill Ventures on February fourth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. This is just a motion to approve the public hearing. No, they're actually required tonight.
Where are we with the annexation agreement for this project?
Uh, we're waiting for a first draft now.
Right.
We're past the first draft. We're waiting to conclude the public hearing draft. Uh, we're having an internal discussion and then, uh, we will schedule a discussion with, uh, Mr. Bergman and his attorney so that there's a, a draft on file with the village clerk for public inspection once the, uh, notice is published in the paper. So any annexation agreement requires a public hearing before the board. Again, it allows the owner and any, uh, any neighbors or anybody else at all to come in and comment on what the village proposes to do.
Yeah. When, when would you anticipate the draft being ready for the village board to take a look at that?
Probably the end of next week. But the law requires that the board by its motion and vote set a date. So we're, we're trying to get that started.
All right.
I, I'd like to make a comment. If you can have it done by end of next week, is there a chance we can see it prior to four thirty on a Tuesday when we've got a vote on it on a Thursday? If it's gonna be done early, if we can get it earlier so we can have more time to review, I'd appreciate that.
The public hearing will have to be until February fourth, so we'll have my calculations, right? Almost three weeks to review it.
Yeah, it'd be nice. I just, oftentimes, we don't get it till, you know, and I get that. But in this case, something of this magnitude, I'd like to have a little earlier instead of two days before the meeting and so on.
Right. Definitely agree with you.
Please. Thank you.
All right, then I undertake a motion to set the public hearing date for the proposed annexation agreement with Briar Hill Ventures, uh, February fourth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM.
So moved. Second.
Got one there. We're giving a second to, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Good Jackie.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
Motion passed six zero.
All right, any further, Mr. Hedges?
Yes, sir.
Phone works, please. I refer to our village manager.
We have a, you have a report in front of you from, uh, excuse me, from Dave Skerritt summarizing, uh, his statistics for the month and also the extreme amount of snowfalling and something that they've been doing for the last week, uh, choose a part.
Trees department's really been busy doing a great job. And that's really all I have to say is to probably, we'd like to have either six inches of snow or rather than freezing fog, which is really rich habit for us.
We've been getting roasted on Facebook over the snow piles pulled behind a car that's illegally parked and just laying on the horn. Not moving, just staying there, laying on the horn. So we got to talk to Dave either. I tried to answer back to the people and said, listen, the reason the police ain't there is because it's a storm, they're out handling accidents. Well, get your towing company. And so all the towing companies are all busy pulling people out of ditches. And that wasn't good enough. So we either have to stop laying on the horn because the ones that were complaining were people that worked nights. So at daytime, is there sleep time?
I'll mess them on the day.
Any further, sir?
Yes, sir.
B D C.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I was muted. Um, yep, B D C has a meeting coming up on Wednesday of next week. We've had, I think, a couple pretty interesting developments that have happened over the holidays. We've got two new potential facade programs, some applicants that are having, starting to have conversations with us. A couple key buildings, I'm not going to really say who it is just yet, just giving them the the chance to officially apply. But we're excited about that. We also have a a couple new, three different things I mentioned to you guys before regarding, you know, creating a business consortium with our business owners in town. We'll be talking about that as well as commercial land development. You know, something that we'd like to provide some guidance towards the board and going towards the future, so we'll be talking about that as well. And outside of that, we also have a new a new article that will be going out that Jeannie had finished on the Vintage Hammer. So that will be going out here in the next week or so. I did get that over the holidays, I got to get that over to Mike so we can get it posted.
I'm going to say that I had it and I forgot it.
No, no, this is me, I was, I took a couple weeks off over the holidays, so I kind of just checked out. So I will get that over to to you so we can get it posted. But other than that, nothing else to report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, friends.
Hi, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, hey, we have some reimbursements in the amount of one hundred and sixty eight dollars and twenty eight cents to be paid on it before January thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Any questions?
I will entertain a motion to approve accounts payable, January seventh, twenty twenty one, for one hundred and sixty eight dollars and twenty eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
I'm trying to give them a chance.
The machines.
No, 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 I'm saying that we all did, we all tried to give them a chance.
Move this along, move this along.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Gajcki.
Aye.
Motion pass six zero.
And our regular accounts payable, two hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and forty nine dollars and sixty two cents to be paid on it before January thirteenth, twenty twenty one. What? No questions from Mr. Coe.
Hold on. Fair enough to do.
Any questions?
It is pretty cold outside.
Sure. I will entertain a motion to approve accounts payable, January seventh, twenty twenty one, the amount of two hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and forty nine dollars and sixty two cents.
So moved. Second.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Gajcki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Yes, six zero.
Nothing, brothers.
Nothing. How come it's relation?
Only announcement would be that the King County Department of Health is bringing their mobile testing unit back to Hampshire High School on Saturday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty one, from eight to four, same deal as last time, it's free, you don't need to have symptoms, they'll test you no matter what. But they are hard stopping at four, so get in line before four. It takes about forty five minutes or so to get through the line. So if you're if you're having your heart set on getting tested, I would be there by three.
Is that the Sunday?
Saturday, January sixteenth.
All right, Sunday, seventeenth.
That's not what they're, that's not what they're putting out.
I know, I saw that on the website.
That's not what they're putting out on the website.
It was supposed to be Carpentersville on Saturday, it's on seventeenth, but I'll check if you're in.
Because if that's not the case, we've been putting out the wrong date and their press release is wrong. Yeah, see, their press release right here says Saturday, sixteenth.
Right.
So I I I'm not discounting what we were told because I read the emails.
Yeah, I saw that today, so.
But but I went off of their press release.
I'll check with them tomorrow and make sure.
Is what, if the dates are different, is what we shared on social media the correct date or the wrong date?
What we shared on social media is their post, and so it was a copy and paste of their post with their press release. So their dates came from them. So it's not like a, like we.
I'm not passing blame, I'm just wondering if we need to do an update.
No, well, that's what Jay's going to call them tomorrow and find out for sure.
The answer is maybe.
And theoretically, theoretically, if they update their posts, then ours will be good.
Yeah, honestly, I think Trissy Kelly at this point, it's probably easier just to swap the days and it is to change the publication. Because it's just between us and Carpentersville, the same company be doing, running both tests, so I'll check with them tomorrow and verify. But the conversation we had originally was it would be a fear of the seventeenth and then Carpentersville on the sixteenth.
They're both days, ain't that far.
Any further, sir?
No.
No.
Letting go, Dave.
No report from me.
Yes.
I'll refer to the chief council. He's got a beautiful graph, he does, lots of blues and reds and greens. That's Jack. Pretty typical month, nothing, hardly ordinary, busy, but not too busy.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do you take it for illegally parked cars?
Yes.
Like the overnight parking thing?
Yeah, yeah. Paul, we need parking tickets. We really need parking tickets.
Oh, I could think. I have a whole list I could give you.
Give it to me because that's, that's twenty five a pop, right? Thirty five. And we get to keep all thirty five. Yes, sir. All right.
Don't tell anyone, it's me.
No, 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 it's like, no.
Don't put that in the minutes.
Former trustee, she can drive around and then call her chief.
Tell me what you want me to do when I retire.
They have citizens to do that with that.
Oh, I don't know if I can do that.
All right, field to trail.
Trail looks.
Uh, no report.
Are you serious?
I meant to, unless he wants to share. Anything, Toad?
No, no.
Neither do I.
All right, field services, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, nothing, nothing to share except for waste management's picking up Christmas trees. So if you have a dead Christmas tree you want to put out, make sure you get it out on trash day.
You want to eat the kalamu place or whatever it's called.
Yeah, goats love.
Or or there are donation sites through Facebook, people say you can go drop them off and the animals eat them. Donate them there too.
Mine in the park, lights and all.
Do you have a chimney?
Nope.
Because that's where the. Upside down.
Any other business before we adjourn?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up, I I don't know quite how to do this, but I I know we've had the campaign of the no mask, no service with the local businesses. And I just wanted to bring up to put it in the in the minutes and have it on record that, I mean, it's when I'm at a local business, I'm not seeing the, I'm not seeing it happen all the time. I know it's, I know it's, it's tricky to ask a business to turn away a customer. But again, I feel like we, if we're going to do this campaign and the businesses are willing to work with us in this, then I I would hope that they would live up to the, I don't, I don't want to call it quite the promise that they've made, but the agreement, no mask, no service, and it's got, it's kind of starting to happen and we got to start, we got to start helping each other out here. So I just wanted to put, bring that up so it could go in the minutes. And I don't want to, I'm not going to call out any specific business on this, I've seen it multiple places and I just wanted to be put in the in the record.
I'd like to comment on that.
Yeah.
For example, I do not have that sign up at my store because I have masks right inside the door. So if you don't have one, I don't want you to leave, I want you to come in and get a disposable mask that I'm providing.
I know, and I, I wasn't addressed, I wasn't even thinking of your business at all. I was thinking of only the businesses that have the sign that we gave them in their window. Yeah. So like, I I I don't know if it's happened at Subway, Subway has a sign, no mask, no service, that we gave them that shows that they are going to cooperate with us in this masking campaign that we have going on.
Yeah, I agree, just consistency would be good. And a partnership, we asked for that, and I I think it was very fair of us to ask for their partnership.
I do too, because we've, we talked a couple meetings ago about what can we do if to enact other things if if businesses aren't going to follow the recommendations and the guidelines. And I think this was a very positive way to go about it. And I would just like, I would just like everybody to live up to the part here that that we all need to help out in this.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I just have to, I have two quick things. One, I want to make an apology to everybody in the room. My tone earlier was a little brash, so I apologize for that. I get frustrated when we as a board have to pass things, and it's not just SSAs, it's also the prevailing wage act where we're told we have to pass something and it's out of our control, it's just a ceremonial process. So I apologize, it wasn't meant towards anybody in there and it came off pretty brash, so I wanted to to say that. The other thing I'd like to just to raise, if, I would ask that we start looking at creating a a board or village official, even if it's department heads, whoever needs to have access, but a joint calendar so that we're all aware of when meetings happen. I know we announce sometimes in in the meeting, like zoning will be on this date or PR committee's meeting on this date. But then there are other things that come up a little, like right before they're going to happen. For example, today there was the hearing for a petition. I I found out about it secondhand, I had no idea that somebody had even questioned one of the petitions. Not that we should be there at these, but we should at least be aware of all the meetings that that are going on for different committees and just a calendar for visibility, just a suggestion, just something out there.
There's one, there's one on the website, but it doesn't integrate with anything, so it doesn't, we don't get notifications, so maybe we can.
And I'm not saying it needs to be out on the website, even if it's just as like phase one, it's a, it's a Microsoft calendar that's shared, right?
So that's, we have, we have one on the website, but it doesn't integrate with anything else, it's independent, I'll buy it all, you're going to do it?
So, but everybody should have had system as teams calendar, we can share that calendar with the whole board, so we can work on that, we have the ability for us teams to do that. We can create that.
I think it'd be good for all of us to be aware of what's going on.
We do that internally amongst staff, but we've never done it before, but we can do it.
All right, anything further? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
No.
Mr. Gajcki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion pass six zero.
You enjoy your day.
You enjoy yourself.
Oh, yeah.
Present.